Calling together the regular city council meeting for November 5th, 2013. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Milton.
Here.
Council President Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Grant.
Here.
Counselor Folsom.
Here.
Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Counselor Langer is absent. Counselor Clark.
Here.
I'm going to take just a moment out here. We lost an officer this past few days from the City of Oregon City. And Lieutenant Hanlon is going to tell us about this person and that they're all in our thoughts.
Yes.
For you that -- do I need to speak into this or ...?
Yes, if you want to be heard.
For you that are not aware of it, Officer Robert Lipke was involved in an incident with the Oregon City Police Department. He was a reserve officer there. He'd been a reserve officer for the past three years. He was shot Sunday afternoon and passed away yesterday around noon at Emmanuel Hospital as a result of those -- of that injury. He was married, and right now his wife is in the hospital. She's five months pregnant with their first child. They're working on the memorial service for him now. It hasn't been set as of yet. We should know something here hopefully by tomorrow. And we have reached out to the Oregon City Police Department to offer any assistance that we can during this time.
Thank you. And it just goes to show how much our officers are willing to do for us to keep us safe in this community. And thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that officer was responding to a house fire, correct?
Yeah, the initial call was a house fire. And during that response, they learned that there was an armed subject involved as well.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, next we have the consent agenda.
I'll move consent.
Wait, pardon me. Oh, sorry, forgot.
Mr. Mayor, there is an item on the consent agenda for which materials had not been previously distributed regarding the city manager's evaluation. With your permission, I'd just like to pass those out now so that they can, if the council approves them this evening, become part of the public record.
Yes.
And while you're doing that, for the record, for the public, these items have been previously reviewed by the city council and in executive session as authorized by law. And the action taken this evening is the final step in the city manager's evaluation process for this year.
So now that you've entered these into the record, they'll become part of the record and part of our city manager's file?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Then I move we adopt consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now we have presentations tonight. And the first one I want to start off with is the recognition of Eagle Scout awards. Leo, please come forward and sit down. Now you're on the spot. Please tell us what your project was.
My project was to make --
Push the button up. First of all, what's your name again?
There you go. Up is right.
Okay. My name is Leo Armani. So I made benches for St. Francis Catholic Church up the street. And I made seven benches for the 14 stations of the cross, going to every other one. And I made this so people can sit there and reflect while they're going through.
Sounds like a great project, and thank you very much. These are the type of projects that really keep us going. This is -- we've had a few Eagle Scouts come through, and all their projects are just awesome, and we really do thank you. And I'd like to present you with a certificate of achievement.
Appreciate it.
Is Cortland Hutchinson, is he here?
No, Cortland.
Okay.
I wonder if he's the one that just went to the academy. I think he's at the Air Force Academy.
Oh, okay. Excuse then. The next one is something that will actually help the entire city and everybody in the city, especially the kids. And we really want to thank our 2014 Rotary Club. Well, you're celebrating your 20th anniversary. As a matter of fact, I used to belong to that club, but I can't get up that early anymore now that I'm retired. So each year, this started way back when I was there, and it was the annual bare root tree sale. And you raised thousands of dollars to put back in our community. A lot of it's been to scholarships. I know different things like that, and it's just been great. You've supported the local community, provided over $20,000 to local scout troops, Sherwood High School through grants, FFA, YMCA, Art Society, The Refuge, Faith in Action, which is part of the senior center now. And you contribute to international projects, and they've been great. You went in La Plata, Huila, Columbia, where you built local park for families and helped to construct water filters, and have funded the purchase of ultrasound equipment. You have delegates to the community to continue developing relationships and future programs. And this is what Rotary does. It's a broad spectrum. It does local and throughout the world and the United States. And that's one of their big actions, too, is Polio Plus. The Rotary Club of Sherwood has been looking for a significant project in the city and saved up the money in the foundation over the last 20 years for such a project. They happily and were honored to support through granting and funds for the Murdoch Park refurbishment. You've offered to help with the demolition and reconstruction of the park. And the city, really, we really would like to thank you for what you've done. It's been fantastic, and it was rather unexpected, I would say. And it's wonderful to have these types of groups in the community that help us out on the issues that we have a little bit of struggle with funding them all. So thank you very much. And I'd like to recognize, and if you're here, stand up. If you're not, don't. So the current president, Kim Nelson, are you here? Okay. President-elect Doug Mueller. Renee Brousse, you're here. Thank you. And actually, Renee's the one who wrote the grant and pushed it through and got it. So we really have to recognize her also. And if any of the members are here, please stand up and be recognized. Jason Patrick. Emily Smith. Mark Fetterspill, I don't see Mark here, but he's always at the senior center in the morning. Heather Brookhouse. Chrissy Kazar. Chuck Britton, don't see him. Ben Bowle, he's probably doing hazelnuts. Wendy Wells. Doug Mueller. Gary Ricklick. Marilyn Yordi. Hey, good to see you. Keith Mays. And Liz Patch. I have a certificate of appreciation to give to you, and it's small compared to what you're doing for our community. And we really do want to thank you. So I'll come down and get it for you.
Come on up, Renee. And everybody who's still, who's here from the Rotary would like to come up. This is a certificate of appreciation that we're issuing to the Rotary Club of Sherwood. You put it on the wall, probably in the senior center, so we'll all see it later. So really wish to thank you. Okay, come on over here, we'll all get a picture.
Liz never gets enough pictures.
Your host.
Yes, Liz.
Yes. I'd much rather be on this side. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Really do appreciate it. [applause] The Rotary group is going to need help with the demolition and the community that's getting it, not just throwing the money at it.
Under new business, two resolutions. Resolution 2013-058 authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to assist the allocation of federal grant funds to plan, design, and construct the Cedar Creek Trail. And then resolution 2013-059 authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County to secure approval of the mid-block crossing for the Cedar Creek Trail. Michelle Miller, senior planner.
Good evening, council. Thank you. Tonight I'm going to give you a brief presentation about the Cedar Creek Trail. I'm going to talk a little bit about the project overall, the general timeline that we have for the process. I'm going to review the planning and engineering part of it, as well as go over the intergovernmental agreements of what you have tonight for the resolutions, and talk a little bit about the next steps for the project. This first slide really kind of shows the timeline and history of the Cedar Creek Trail and all of the work of the community and the past councils' approvals and monies that have gone into planning the Cedar Creek Trail to get to where we are this evening. I could find some information as far back as 1992, receiving a small grant toward the development of the Cedar Creek Trail. There were bond measures in 1998 as well as 1994 indicating approval of a Cedar Creek Greenway. So an idea of having a central spine through the center of the city to connect both sides of Highway 99W with a trail or pathway. Back in 2005, council approved some funds for the Tonkin Trail feasibility study that was wrapped into the master planning process that you might recall that we just wrapped up this year, providing, that's the multi-use regional trail that will ultimately connect Wilsonville, Sherwood, and Toalatin, and then also points north with the West Side Trail to really provide regional connections for Sherwood through a multi-use path. In 2009, park SDCs were used to conduct the Cedar Creek Trail feasibility study, which really laid the groundwork for where we are this evening with the Cedar Creek Trail. It provided an analysis of whether the trail was even feasible through this environmentally sensitive area, as well as getting public input on and feedback about whether the trail was a right fit for the city. So once that project was completed, city council approved a resolution in 2010 authorizing staff to say, "Go out and get some funding for this trail. Let's really put this into the ground." And so in 2012, with the support of the community and different elected officials and staff, we were awarded the Regional Flexible Fund Grant for design and construction of the Cedar Creek Trail for fiscal year 2013, 2015. And that was a $5.1 million grant. So I wanted to kind of show this old map from 1998 where the Cedar Creek Trail is kind of highlighted there through the corridor. So it's really been on the books for a long time. It's a long time in the making for tonight's work. Here we have the overall Cedar Creek project study. A lot of you have seen this map already, but I wanted to highlight again, for those of you not too familiar with the project, the Cedar Creek Trail, you can see it starts up at Roy Rogers Road to the north, extends through the Cedar Creek Greenway Corridor at Highway 99W. Then we'll have an at-grade crossing at southwest Minnekee and 99W intersection, and then head back up to the Cedar Creek Corridor southward, connecting with existing Stella Olson Park Boardwalk, and into Old Town area where it'll wind its way using the existing street grid for Old Town and heading out to Oregon Street and the Oregon Street Roundabout. From there, it will connect with the proposed Tonkin Trail, points toward Wilsonville and also toward Toalatin, so providing that regional connection. So as you can see from this map, we have a pretty good idea where the alignment will be, south of 99W. And so that was not quite as determined on the north section of Highway 99W. So we ended up splitting the projects into two separate projects for the purposes of this grant award. We'll have a preliminary engineering phase for what we call Project One, which is south of 99W, and a planning for the alignment north of Highway 99W is called Project Two. So here's a brief timeline of where we are with the process. Project One will begin the construction, engineering, and permitting, which will take approximately 15 months, while Project Two begins work on finalizing the alignment to get to that 30% construction design. And then that process will take about nine months, that planning phase. It'll wrap into, go back and wrap into Project One, where we'll end up with construction occurring about 15 months after the initial project, which will take about nine months to complete the construction and finalizing that project at the end of 2015. So there are a lot of issues still to be resolved. What type of surface will we use? What are some of the design elements that will be in the trail? What are the safety measures, security issues? Will the trail be lit in any way? So all of those decisions will, we set up, and you might recall the decision-making structure, with the Parks Board really providing the bulk of the advising to you as you make the decisions about these major decisions. Helping along in that process, back in March, we formed a local trail advisory committee, and that was people interested in helping with the alignment design, as well as neighbors that live along the corridor, especially on Project Two section, to help finalize that alignment. They will really help inform the project as it gets moving to the Parks Board. We'll also have a technical advisory committee, along with city staff and a project team, to really come up with the best resolution for what the community is interested in, which will also involve a public involvement component as well. So before you this evening are the intergovernmental agreements with ODOT and Washington County. ODOT is acting as the agent for the federal grant, and they'll be administering the funds to the local agency, which is the City of Sherwood. And Washington County, intergovernmental agreement is necessary because there's some parts of the trail that will cross Washington County roads, such as along Roy Rogers or Edie Road as well. So the first resolution, the council will be authorizing the city manager to enter into an IGA with ODOT to manage the project and effectively agree to the grant, and agree that the city will provide the local match of 10.27% of the overall grant. Exhibit One is the IGA for Project One, and Exhibit Two is the IGA for Project Two. And then the second resolution and exhibit is the one with the IGA with Washington County. So next steps could be to review the IGAs and authorize the necessary signatures. Parallel to that is an RFP process, request for proposals to select our consultants for the project, work with the consultants to negotiate a firmer work order contract, and then, parallel to that, ODOT will be requesting the release of funds from the federal government. We'll be holding our kickoff meetings in the upcoming months, once the contract is finalized and the design and planning work begins. And with that, I'll take any of the questions that you might have.
I don't have a question, but I just want to let you know, as the liaison with the Parks and Rec Board, the Parks and Rec Board unanimously supports this project. It's been one of the top items in the Parks Plan over the last few years, so, once again, the Parks and Recreation Board support this 100%.
Thank you. Counselor Folsom?
Before Bill, I was actually the Parks Board liaison, so I have a couple of things that I just want to confirm in my mind. I appreciate all the historical data you gave us. The 2009 allocation of funds for the feasibility study, at the time, system development charges were low in the coffers of the Parks Board, and I believe this depleted them, but we knew it was a priority. Because in 2006, when we had done the Parks Master Plan, Kristin, is she here? Oh, she's there. I believe that walking trails were the number one priority from the statistically valid survey that the company we hired did. Is that correct?
That is correct. Well, over nearly, I think it's almost 80% of the people, that was one of their most supported ideas for the Parks Plan overall. With that receiving the number one priority for future acquisitions were Greenway and Parks Trails.
And then we spent $180,000 plus, I believe, on the feasibility study. Is that correct?
Close to $191,000, actually, of Parks Development SDCs.
So, but this project, in essence, has been going on for 21 years, if we look back to 1992.
As early as 1992.
And it really, it takes a long time, but some of the other questions I had are actual, this is just a very exciting time for me, because it's, I, that was the very first month of my tenure that we started this project, and it takes a long time for something of this nature, $5.1 million. So that is federal money that is funding that grant, is that correct?
Right, it's federal highway transportation dollars.
And connectivity was also high on the priority list, and that's why it was a funded project. Is that correct?
It received a lot of attention because it was serving that necessary multimodal connection for connectivity that we were really short there when it came to crossings at Highway 99W and connecting the community through a trail system. And recognizing that the community was really supportive of a trail system, we put our dollars behind that with the feasibility study, and that's how, one of the reasons why it garnered so much support for receiving the flexible funds.
So this has gone through a pretty extensive process, where the public has been participating and voicing their support for this project. Is that correct?
That's correct. In doing a little research for tonight's presentation, I saw that the Tonkin Trail Master Plan received over 1,000 comments region-wide about the trail and participated in that process.
So one of the advantages also that we can highlight in this situation that I don't think we've brought out yet is that the urban wildlife refuge, which is one of only 10 in the nation, will be connected to Old Town by about 2.1 miles of trail. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, theoretically, at Roy Rogers, there's the west parking access to the refuge. And so using the Roy Rogers as an access point, as you come in into the city, people can just jot right down through the Cedar Creek Greenway and head into Old Town from the refuge.
So it actually could be considered an economic revitalization tool for our urban redevelopment area as well?
Right. That's correct.
So is it also true that the maintenance on most of the trail, it takes about five years before the initial maintenance fees start to kick in? So have we looked at how those are going to be funded over time?
Well, we've done some preliminary work with the feasibility study and estimating the costs there. Annual maintenance fees run about $4,000 per mile of trail created. And that'll be part of the planning process as we move forward. What type of materials will we need to account for in the maintenance costs? And it will be part of the planning efforts so that people can weigh those costs and establish the best solution for the community. As far as a maintenance plan and who will be doing that, you know, I really trust the efforts of the community and pulling together. We have a real civic-minded community. Perhaps there's some creative ways that we can go about creating a maintenance plan that will work for the community over the long run.
I think, I think I've covered about all of the things. Thank you so much. Oh, oh, that was, so, so I was writing down questions as you were talking. So if we do have maintenance costs associated with it, the system development charge that come into the Parks Board coffers won't necessarily be able to maintain this. So we would have to find another source. Is that correct?
That's correct. So it's my understanding that park SDCs can only be used for new acquisitions of park land. So maintenance wouldn't fall into that realm.
Okay. So how do we maintain some of our other facilities, do you know?
Well, we use Public Works for that, but Craig Sheldon's here. I'm sure he would be happy to speak on that.
[laughing] Great. Because I know, I'm trying to ask the questions and respond to questions that I've heard within the community, so I appreciate.
Actually, our trail maintenance is behind schedule, if you look at the new plan that was given to the Budget Committee, because we've had cuts in our trail maintenance. But we're, Michelle talks about $4,000 a mile or so. That's pretty close. I would say between $4,000, $4,500, $5,000 at the highest per mile of maintenance.
And is that per anion?
Per mile of trail.
So starting from day one, or?
You're pretty close to the five years. It's, I don't have it with me, but it's broke out over a 30-year life cycle, and it's in the refurbishment or the facility asset plan that was given to Budget Committee here a few weeks ago. It talks about when to do those certain parts of cracked ceilings, slurry sealed trails, as well as pavement repairs.
So what I hear you saying is the initial maintenance doesn't begin until five years after the trail has been, approximately.
If you're talking surface stuff, if you're talking trash, litter, you're talking vegetation, that all starts right off the bat.
But I believe that's what you were referring to, is we have a very civic-minded community.
Right.
And I agree, because my son will be, is a Boy Scout. He would love to pick up trash. So anyhow, well, he would. He does it all the time. Okay.
Is that on the record, or are you volunteering?
[laughing] I know. Well, yeah. Well, thank you so much, Michelle. I just want to voice my support as well. I was on the Parks Board. It was the thing that we were talking about, because it had been, at the time, such a high priority to the community, and we already have such a great trail system that I actually use almost daily. I have to tell you, when I went on sabbatical, we really, as a family, choose to go to locations who have a trail system. We rented bikes every single place we went, and we went a lot of places. So thank you very much.
Okay. So, yeah, maintenance was a concern of mine also, a brunt. And along with the style of the trail, we talked about a lot, but other than that, maintenance. And so I think we all have a challenge when it comes to overall park maintenance in the coming years. And we know the number. It's something like a quarter of a million dollars a year. When you bring it all in, divide it all out by the number of years, it's something like that, plus or minus. And I see this as part of that challenge. But a worthwhile challenge for an asset that I think the public is going to value as much as they do Snyder Park and Stella Olson, I think it's that big of a deal. And then to bring in the five-plus million. And also, a lot of those, a lot of that maintenance has got to take place after the urban renewal district closes. So the finances of the city will change when, at the close of the urban renewal district. So there's a lot of dynamics at play, but it's a worthwhile challenge for us, because it's such a great project. So I'm in support of it.
Well, Counselor Folsom hit on most of the things that I was going to talk about, and I, too, am really excited about the project. I think that we are a walking community, and I think that we use our trails tremendously that we have, and to be able to join up Old Town to the refuge, I just think would be a huge asset to our community, and also an economic development piece for people wanting to visit our community. So I think that it's great. My biggest concern was maintenance, and so I'm really glad that that is at the top of the list for when we start talking about the project, that we don't forget about that. So that the councils preceding us or following us aren't hit with that five years down the line. And, "Oh, what happened? No one planned for this?" So I'm really excited that we are being forward-thinking in that. And so I appreciate hearing. So I'm really excited that we are being forward-thinking in that, and so I appreciate hearing that from you. So I think that's, I'm in support of the project.
So this is part of a regional trail system, correct?
That's correct.
Right, and we have a representative from Parks Board who's been serving on the Tonkin Trail Advisory Committee?
Brian Stucker, yes.
Like, how many years, three years?
Well, he began work with me on, we worked together on the master plan project, which started in 2008 or '09. And so I'm not sure when he was appointed originally to the Parks Board, but he's still on the Parks Board.
He was my first appointment, I believe, March of 2009.
And the money, the five million that we've been allocated for this project actually comes from a federal grant, right?
That's correct.
And is this a unique, have we had a federal grant project similar to that? And I'm wondering what, what either increased oversight or scope that that might factor into us? And then you had talked about, we have a very civic-minded community, and so how does that civic-minded community get involved in a project like this going forward, given the step that we're in right now?
So, so part of the, part of the structure that we set up in, back in March, for having a local trail advisory committee help with that. And as we move forward, when we identify things that might need responses from, from the community, as we build our maintenance plan, for example, alternatives that'll be developed, we can proceed with outreach efforts in that capacity to kind of see what projects might be able to be tabled for, say, an environmental group for mitigation purposes, or a project that we might use for Arbor Day celebration. Things like that, we can tap into and identify as, as we begin the project and start thinking about it in those terms.
You have some?
I'm looking, Tom, I'm not aware of specific projects, other than maybe the pavement, the
Sherwood Overland.
Oh, right. Unshored Boulevard.
And certainly, having federal funds makes it a little bit more complex, there's more oversight, more people paying attention to the numbers. So we, it just adds a little bit more complexity to our management of the project. Tom, do you want to talk about, like, any other topics?
No, that's the only one in the recent history, was the repaving of Sherwood Boulevard, which came through the American Recovery Act funding. So essentially, the monies go from, from federal highways to ODOT. So we have to follow all of ODOT contracting rules and their processes for doing a project like this. There is a lot of oversight, there are a lot of things, because they deal with big projects and a lot of money. We have to pay Davis Bacon wages and other things. So, there's certainly more process, but a lot of cities have gone through that, and we have professionals that help us through the process.
When, when we participated in the Ice Age Tonkin Trail Master Planning Process, that was a federal grant. And so that was, we were part of that, we provided some matching fund dollars for, for that grant, but we did not run that grant.
Okay.
Okay, I have a couple, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, a couple of my questions now, is it funded from '99 to the, also to the Wildlife Refuge?
To the extent of our city boundaries, for, to Roy Rogers, that would include the Roy Rogers Crossing?
No, I just wanted to make sure this was all funded in $5,600, in the grant. The project, it will be completed with this money when we're done.
So, the, the grant award is for the design and construction specifically allocated for Project One construction. Project Two construction hasn't been determined yet. We won't know whether it's merely a planning phase for that project at this time. But it has enough cushion, so to speak, so if we, if the design gets done and there are other funds available, we can move that and decide at that time what portions to construct, if any.
So at that, from now, it's not funded from '99 to the Wildlife Refuge?
That's correct.
Okay. Another thing that kind of hit me, and this is just me, of all that money, $4,338, $4,338, $5,28, for the trail, $1,358, $5,64 is for planning and engineering. So that's almost a quarter of the project, is just the planning and engineering because of the guidelines from the federal government, Metro, and all the other agencies, correct?
Well, I like to blame engineering for that. But
But I mean, it just seems like a huge chunk of money to sit there and plan this out. Can we make changes to this trail? I mean, like, the part from the circle up to Old Town is a 12-foot cement path going down there that really has already got sidewalks on one side, but this will be a trail, if you want to call it that, but it'll be almost a road.
Well, some of those design decisions are possible to alter at this point. We know that it's going on Oregon Street, but I'm, but the way that the trail will connect with Tonquin, the Tonquin Trail, it's important for that connection, for that purpose, and that's part of what our grant award was, was to allocate for.
And the county has not even, really even looked into their section, have they? They've started the planning, but they have no money set aside for their section.
I'm not aware what the, what the county is planning at this phase. I know that they're working on their, their regional transportation plan. I do know that Metro is working on acquisition along Tonquin Road for some, for some parts of the trail. So there's pieces in Wilsonville that are, are connected at this time as part of the Ice Age Tonkin Trail.
And it's too late to want to do the section from Old Town to the Wildlife Refuge and not do the other section, correct? To not do the Oregon Street first, look for funding for it later?
It's too late for that.
Okay. And to me, I mean, just me, but there's just a lot of unanswered questions, especially that whole section that's not going to be built, that we talk, I mean, it's going to be planned, and plans are great, we have tons of those around. But it just, I want the public to know that this isn't free. It's much like when they did the study on the transportation plan for the county, where they said, ask the public, do you want roads? Well, heck, yeah. Are you going to pay $40 a registration fee on your vehicle? Heck, no. I want the public to be aware that this is going to impact the city tremendously financially on down the road. So personally, I'd like to see a go, public vote. I don't think anybody else is willing to do that, but I think the public needs to know that when we plan this, build it, you're going to pay for it down the road. I pay homeowner fees for my maintenance of our trails in our area, and it's 140, I think, every six months, which is fine. But I want everybody to know, this is not a freebie, that down the road, we'll have all these wonderful trails that we don't have to take care of. There's 18,000 people here, and we're going to have to take care of it. And I love the public help, they will help, I know, to an extent, but if you walk through Stella's, and there's a lot of garbage and down there that's not picked up, except by Public Works. So, this is a huge community project, and that's my feelings, is that I just think that everybody needs to know what the future brings cost-wise. And it's a great plan, I don't like Metro's requirements on some of it. Because we could do, in parts of it, we could do actually a, what do they call it, a substandard trail, where you're actually walking in like the Wildlife Refuge, where it's gravel, and you go through parts like that. And that's what I'd like to see, because it brings you back to nature, not a 12-foot highway shooting down the middle of, that's just me. I'm, you know, I've been involved in Mazamas for years, and we're always looking at the rural end. We build our own trails, we maintain them, and the public does it, but not to the tune of, it'll be over $10 million when we get it done, by the time we do the other section, too, and we figure a crossing and all that. So I just want everybody to know, this ain't a freebie. When we pay 10%, and it's coming off, it mentions in or off, our street SDCs and our URA funds. So this project is going to be very, very, very expensive. And I'd like to see the public get a full list of what it's going to cost us, throw it on the ballot. If everybody loves it, boom, we move on. But that's, that's my way of doing it, and it's not what we have to do, it's just my suggestions.
So along that same line of thinking, how do we know what the cost of the trail is if we haven't finished the design of the trail?
That's just it. We need to know before, you can, you can do a maintenance plan before you do, pretty much, Craig did it on everything else. You just give him what the trail's going to be, he could give us a maintenance on what it's going to be. And then look at a cost of what it's going to cost us to go to the Wildlife Refuge down to '99. If we either go under or over, what was the cost of going under, we think? We had, it was $11 million, wasn't it, something like?
It's prohibitive.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I just want everybody to know that if they really want this, that's great, but don't be surprised when we have to come back asking for money, we have to cut other areas in our budget. So, it's just, I don't like surprises, and so this is, to me, it's a great project, I love the money involved in it, but I want all the answers before we start on it, so.
Before we start construction?
Before we start even planning on it. The planning's going to cost us 25% of the whole project.
Right, right. So the grant that we received, or allocated to receive, includes the design, correct?
That's correct.
Once you start the design and you accept the federal money, if it turns out unfeasible, you still have to pay the $1 million back, because you haven't completed the project, according to the RFP. If you plan it, you say this is prohibitive.
For certain phases. So this, we'll have a first phase, which is the designing, design phase of Project One. We get to the point where, where it's a go or a no-go, and then it allocates the construction money for Phase Two if we decide to go.
But we still have to pay for the planning and engineering, even if we don't put one bit of concrete down there for the trail. Once you start, it says in there, you have to pay the fees back to the federal government up until what you've spent.
For the phase.
Right, so if we spend, we're looking at about 25% for the first phase, is engineering, planning, and all that. And if we run into any issues with hazardous materials, anything of that, that really blows up the cost, we still have to pay for that.
That's not my understanding.
Oh, okay, because it says in there that once you start the program, if you don't complete it, you pay the government back the costs.
Meaning the construction, that
So if you just do the planning and engineering, the government will just pay you if we find out it's too expensive to complete?
I believe so.
I don't think so, but that's just, I'm not sure, but it says, is that true?
I can find out that in more detail and get back to you about it, definitely, confirm that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I will be prepared for that specific question, so I don't know.
So Mayor?
Go ahead.
Are you done? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2013-058.
I'll second.
That's the first one.
Mm-hmm.
Does the public, did you say anything about this?
Not in this, no. You can during public comments. I need a second?
I did.
Robin, second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No.
We passed 5/8, now we have to pass 5/9.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Where's Michelle?
Oh, she's gone.
She's sitting up there.
Oh, do you want to address the IGA with Washington County?
Sure.
I mean, if you have anything to add to that?
No, the Washington County IGA is to approve their, that we submit to them the work on the mid-block crossings, and they approve that the trail will go across Edie Road and Roy Rogers, and that we can design and work together to come up with a good solution.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 20, excuse me, 2013-59.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Now we're moving into citizen comments. Mara Broadhurst.
Do I just push this button?
Actually, go ahead and push it again, I think.
Mara Broadhurst, 28440 Southwest Vlad Hill Road, Sherwood, Oregon. I'd like to say thank you to all the folks who voted yes on annexation. Elections stress and test the character of a city. You had to be brave to stand up and be counted. I'm not sure the founding fathers could have withstood Facebook. Organized social media animosity can be daunting, relentlessly promoting misinformation. Bragging about the power to ruin just because you can, and then joking about it, is not clever, just mean. But it is America, or is it? Hopefully not the new face of Sherwood. You have to keep faith, the decision will be based on legitimate consideration of the issues and not bully scare tactics. We are all proud of the town next door, great place for all kids, number 16 and number 5, small town in America designations. Getting builders to invest in Sherwood or people to move here didn't used to be so easy. How many of you remember the tannery smell behind Hopkins on a hot afternoon? The nude strip club on 99W, the nudie cutie, the Blue Mountain dog food plant? Builders spent a lot of big money working with a positive-minded community to create great family neighborhoods. The city protected our wetland environment and planned for the sustainability of our Sherwood vision, which always included Brookman Road. Now what, draw a line, build a wall, everyone else keep out? The proud sense of bully control power that permeates Sherwood politics should remember, hubris leads to nemesis. Watch your back, or do whatever it takes to win, regardless of the truth or consequences, is not the right democratic lesson for the kids. The local businesses fear economic boycotts and struggle under the no-growth policy. Do we really want to be the number one most negative town that shuns new business, new jobs, new houses, new people? No to everything, cancel Christmas. Sherwood didn't used to be that weird, and can only be so big. The annexation land was needed when brought into the urban growth boundary 11 years ago. The line was drawn, the land rezoned, and restricted to FD 20, future development. After public involvement, school scrutiny, and city study, the Brookman Concept Plan further zoned and limited the land. For wanting to proceed with those plans, we are labeled greedy speculators. Who's been fooling who or whom? Hmm. The spooks should quit using Sherwood to propagandize vindictive agendas. Hold zombies accountable for irresponsible recklessness. When democracy speaks, it should be about keeping the American dream alive for everyone, and that includes the Brookman Road annexation property owners and their rights, not two goats. This land also includes about 20 acres of pristine Cedar Creek wetlands. What an opportunity for Sherwood citizens to add this gem to the park trails for all to enjoy. The worst election experience was getting cussed at while putting up yes signs, then followed to the next spot for more intimidation. The Sherwood Gazette and social media reported high-density zoning, fueling the frenzy that this land was zoned for apartments. This, of course, is not true and was very frustrating. Reminiscing with old-time business and property owners about the good old days, when progress and prosperity made sense, was the best. I hope Sherwood is allowed to blossom. I found these enduring principles to be at the heart of any election. Be kind, you're in God's country. Share, promote positive values, don't discriminate, teach tolerance, recall bullies, set goals and see them through. Welcome, citizens, families, property owners, businesses, city officials, homeowners, home builders, and weirdos. We all love this town, let freedom ring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Nancy Taylor.
I'm sure you all know what we got in the mail last week. We got our tax bills. Or was it the week before? I can't remember. If you did get it, and you opened it up and you looked at it, you saw a lot of things in there. And I just want to say to the council that, when I opened it up this year, I took an extra-special, long time with it so that I could see where the money was going. And I'm not sure this council voted on everything that I paid for, but, yikes, lots of money. And I would just like to say that in the future, when we come and we want to make citizens' comments, and we say things like, "We don't agree with you," I don't think we're not agreeing with a personality. I'm an INTJ, and I tend to disagree with people and their ideas, not them as personalities. But I do hear you all talking in the back room, and it disturbs me that you want to always be seen as one body. You're not, you're all individuals up there. You all You all have different personality types. You all have different agendas for being here. And I'm just wanting to say to all of you, when you're voting, think about the citizens, not just the citizens you know, but all of the citizens in Sherwood. We don't want to pay those bills. There were certain things on my tax bill that really disturbed me. To know that I'm giving such a big chunk to urban renewal made me very upset. I do want you to know that, and I guess, I'm not going to say I don't think you care, but I think that you made decisions that now we all have to live with, and I don't appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's the last citizen comment form, I believe, I have? Okay.
Before I start, I've got some papers here. Just one for each. One for each plus the other. Susan Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. Jim is out of town, otherwise he would be here. This is a document from him for the council. It's regarding the property at 22065 Southwest Pacific Highway. The graveling and the changing of the property without any permits. If you will please read that over. This is something that's been going on for 18 months. It's in the planning with a hearings officer now, but it's still important how it got where it was, how long it took to get there, and why it is where it is. And the request is for city council oversight on that. So that document is there. The other thing I wanted to talk about, the Cedar Creek Trail that you guys just passed. When that was talked about, just in the conversation tonight, I've been to a lot of the different meetings, in the conversation tonight, it's changed yet again. And part of the administrative money that says that it's going for planning and engineering, the clarification that I wanted, and to make sure that it runs through the ODOT documents, we have a policy in town, and maybe Julie Blums can tell us, are we also taking an administrative override that goes into our general fund because there was $1.2 million in the last budget that was anticipating this $5.2 million grant, or now it's up to $5.5, whatever it is? If we are also having a separate administrative funding, you know, charge on that money, that makes it even more expensive and less for us to actually get improvements built on there. So I have that. And then also, as far as the city manager evaluation, we still don't have that system set up and completed. I don't even know where we are in that process, but the citizens themselves have not had a time that the city council has let the citizens approach them as a council and talk about the city manager evaluation, or seen what, I mean, there's a partial criteria, but there was some report that was just delivered or made public notice. I tried to get a hold of it earlier. Wasn't available. I think probably by the end of the night, it'll be available. But what that process is, it's valuable to have staff input, it's valuable to have city council input, it's extremely valuable to have citizen input when you're talking about the city manager, who is in charge of all the employees and all of the interactions that the community has with the employees and with the city managers. It just seems appropriate, and in the past, we've done that, where we have been part of that process and been able to give appropriate input at the right time in the right forum. We need to get that taken care of. And then also, on the Cedar Creek Forum, or Cedar Creek Trail, the other clarification that I had on that is, this is the first time I've heard that now we have the north side of Highway 99 unfunded. And as part of that, there's a piece of property that Jim and I gave to the city, that the stipulation was that the trail was not going to go to the south of that property, next to our property, but the trail would extend to the north of that property. I just want to make sure, because we are using federal money and because that was part of the deal at the beginning, that that's still flowing through, that that trail is going to go to the north of that property.
Thank you, Susan. And staff can get back with you on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Eugene Stewart.
Eugene Stewart, first off, I'd like to thank the city for finally getting the ducks cleaned out at the senior center. I heard one comment, "You can stand over the ducks now, and you feel air coming up through them," so they must have been pretty dirty. I understand they had three trucks up there cleaning them out, and there was still dust flying around when they came in Monday morning. Hopefully, you'll set a schedule and not let that happen again, because I believe there's probably 30 years' worth of dirt and dust in those systems, and you're asking for diseases to be spread by not keeping them clean, which seems to go to a point. Seems like the city needs to get a better handle on what their annual maintenance costs are going to be before we go spending money on new projects. Just as every day, I get the opportunity to sit in this wonderful traffic we have out here in 99W, and I don't see with what Washington County's spending, it's really going to help anything. All you have to do is look at the other ends of our highways. Number one, you go down Towleton Sherwood Road, you get to Towleton, it's a bottleneck. You go down 99W, you get to Bull Mountain Road, that's a bottleneck. Every time a Trimat bus pulls off, it's got its rear end out in the middle, so only one lane of traffic can get by. We need to start looking to these things and start thinking about traffic for autos. And yes, it would be nice if we get more carpooling and things like that, but Trimat could not ever. If you stop to think, if we had 6,000 people, you wanted to try to get on the bus out of this town, where are you going to get those money for the extra 400 buses? And how are you even going to create routes that go where cars go that buses can't? I think we're in a rural community, and it's time metro, you know, found, you know, looked at it and understood that we are different. We're not downtown Portland. So that's kind of, and the other thing is, is that, are we, oh, there again on Towleton Sherwood, are we, hopefully, we're not putting any businesses out of business. But as roads become so congested, you cannot meet your goal of 40% business out in the Sherwood area, because what business is going to move to an area that's so congested, they can't get the trucks and traffic in and out? And we need to take a better look at what's happening at the other ends of our roads, so that we understand. Believe me, there's a lot of traffic moving up and down, and when the city of Portland starts talking about taking Barbara Boulevard or 99W in there and closing it down to two lanes, let me tell you, right now, the traffic on Barbara Boulevard, I've said this before, is as full as it was, as it was before I-5 was ever, was built. And when you shut that down, that's just going to back up all the way through Tyre, all the way to Sherwood. So we need to take a better, have a better understanding on our traffic than what we do. We seem to be just jumping to whatever metro tells us without even questioning or challenging them, or coming up with good alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Patricia Claus.
I wish to share with you a few excerpts from some of the material that my parents submitted tonight. As a city council, for the sake of the citizens, I believe it is time to confront...
First of all, you got your name.
Patricia Claus.
And then just Sherwood resident.
Sherwood resident.
Thank you.
As a city council, for the sake of the citizens, I believe it is time to confront some of the structural flaws in city operations. Council has been seated long enough to know that some problems have become chronic. Senior staff in our town are very well-paid, with excellent benefits, and are, by and large, non-citizens of the town. We pay them very well. I believe it is not too much to ask that our city become legally, not politically, based in its application of the local and state rules and regulations. We have supposedly paid Barry Elsner and Hammond attorneys to watch our codes, give us advice as supposed municipal law experts, and provide an employee handbook to move our town away from cronyism, favored citizen status, and other unprofessional behaviors. Hopefully, we have not also paid for a get-out-of-jail-free card for some of the mayor's former, the former mayor's political backers. I believe the recent and current activities of the senior staff are serious enough breaches of the employee handbook that these senior staffers should be terminated. As a town, we need to clean house with professional civil servants concerned with the process, not control of land use regulations for political manipulations. If our senior staff cannot abide by our codes in our employee handbook, we need to replace them. Controlling of individual life and property without due process and equal treatment is a step out of democracy and towards dictatorship and more. The case I bring to the city council is one that the city council is already familiar with. The illegal graveling of about 3/4 of an acre grassy areas located at 22065 Southwest Pacific Highway in Sherwood. I do not believe this is an isolated incident, however, we'll just focus on the events surrounding the illegal actions by a political backer of the former mayor. Let me briefly analyze, in my opinion and belief, what happened here that, if not stopped now, can lead to a lawsuit. In October of 2011, Mr. Doyle bought taxation land number 2100, located at 22065 Southwest Pacific Highway, specifically to utilize to provide additional parking for the dental offices in the Cedar Brook Professional Building next door. Mr. Doyle worked with two licensed businesses in Sherwood and the state of Oregon to excavate large amounts of dirt from a 1/2 acre on the property, which has only one acre developable, and put in large amounts of gravel, and then began to park his vehicles on the property. The filled dirt could have been used inexpensively to help fill the Cedar Brook Way right of way. At least five dentists and their staffs operating out of the Cedar Brook Professional Building began parking their vehicles on the illegally excavated and gravelled areas. The city continued to allow the dentists leasing from the Doyle's property to use this illegally excavated and gravelled grassy area. The city also allowed Mr. Platt, who alleges that he is not operating a construction office out of this site, to use another converted grassy area to store heavy construction equipment. This is a property that has no history of that use.
Thank you, Patricia, but the four minutes are up.
Might I continue? I only have a few sentences left.
Quickly do the two sentences, and then we'll move on.
Thank you. Nancy and Al Williams used this house as a residence. She also had a small hair salon that she operated, a room attached to the garage area. They sold their highway access to ODOT. The Sherwood Transportation System Plan requires that this property's legal access is to enter off of Cedar Brook Way. Thank you.
Josie Claus. I'll need your name, and are you a citizen or a resident of Sherwood?
Josie Claus, and yes, I am a citizen of Sherwood. All right. Um, okay, so I'm going to be reading an excerpt from something that my parents wrote, of course. Initially, interim city manager Tom Pesamir, and then Joel Gall, as city manager, refused to have the city contract attorney pursue legal sanctions with the enforcement penalties associated with the illegal activity. They allowed the illegal parking and the illegal use to continue. Why no investigation? Activities are occurring here that, if my wife and I did, we would be taken to court, fined, and have anything else done to us the city could think of to do. This illegal activity would still be occurring, except that the state police were going to be brought in to enforce the codes or take action against the local officials who refused to enforce the code. The city manager, according to Chapter 15.28.030, has the duty and responsibility to investigate complaints and conduct inspections to enforce the codes. Under the penalty sections of this code, it states, A, unless specifically limited elsewhere in the Sherwood Municipal Code, the city manager is authorized to seek a civil penalty from any violator an amount of up to $1,000 for each violation of any of the provisions of the Sherwood Municipal Code. B, when determining the amount of the civil penalty, the city manager, if appealed, shall consider at a minimum the following factors and set out the notice or determination those believed to apply to the situation. One, prior violations and whether those violations were remedied in a timely manner. Two, the magnitude of the violation. Three, whether the violation was repeated or continuous. And four, whether the violation was intentional or otherwise. The city manager and his senior staff are violating the employee's manual. This must also be stopped. The latest changes made to higher, the latest changes made to our employee handbook were in June of 2012, after the current city manager was hired. Under Section 3.4.3 Notice, Mr. Gall has not notified the employees that they could be fined for allowing the illegal use of parking, and they could be fired. There is no way Barry Elsner and Hammond and Gall do not have access to the staff report on the Doyle application, yet he has done nothing. Ask yourself, why would Gall not be stopping this illegal activity rather than aiding and abetting the application and continuing his illegal activities for 18 months? Look at Section 3.7.2 and Section 3.7.3. You may have an answer that gives reasons to dismiss Gall. In part, it reads, "No city employees may actively work for or against or attempt to influence the election or defeat any of the candidates for mayor or council, or the election to defeat of any of the other political candidates or ballot measure." Look at 3.8.2 Prohibited Activities. Clearly allowing someone to proceed to excavate 3/4 of an acre of land, change the drainage, etc., is giving a financial advantage to someone who was a political supporter of the ex-mayor. If it's stopped, it would be fine, but it appears to be even more of a cover-up. If you read Section 3.18.1, it is clear that neither Gall or the city contract attorney has reprimanded, as required, Bob Gilotti, Tom Pesamir, and/or Julia Heiduk or Jeff Growth for failing to stop what they themselves labeled as an illegal use. If you then look at Section 3.18.3 Termination of Employment, Gall has violated the following: careless, inaccurate, unreliable, or otherwise unsatisfactory work performance or productivity, interfering with the impeding or other city employees' work.
Thank you. Okay. Naomi Benlow.
I just want to continue from number two down.
Hi, my name is Naomi, and I live here in Sherwood. I'm going to continue, just so she can get in everything that she wanted to say. So number two is interfering with or impeding the other city employees' work. Bill Collins should have started enforcement against Mr. Doyle. The city contract attorneys have aided and abetted the city manager. Number three, there's a breach of trust. These are Gall's employees, and he has failed to force them to act consistently and violated his fundamental trust responsibilities to the citizens. Number four, has violated any conduct that is illegal under federal state law. The state building code has been violated. The local engineering code and zoning code have been violated, and clearly, they are ignoring major differences in Doyle's conduct versus code provisions. Also, under this section of the handbook, Gall additionally has violated Section 3.18.3 Major Infractions, bringing discredit to yourself or the city, dishonesty of any type in conduct in the course of employment that could result in legal action against the city, failure or refusal to cooperate in an investigation, or interfering with an internal investigation. All right. Now, I just wanted to go on and say what I wanted to say, and that is, I really wanted to thank Ray Pitts and Fennett from their... wanted to thank Ray Pitts and Fennett from their various newspapers, Ray Pitts from the Gazette and Fennett from the Oregonian for publishing some articles which helped reflect the care and love that people have of Sherwood. And I'm really happy that people have taken the time to comment on Facebook and elsewhere and put signs in their yards to save the small farms just south of town and have voted against the annexation because this is such a great place. I think it started out as a small town and we need to keep it that way. There's only so much that this ecosystem can handle between Parrot Mountain and the Twalton River and you can only fit so many people in this space. If we do at some point want to expand the city limits, I'm glad that it'll always be brought to vote and that the people will have a say in that. So I just wanted to reiterate that it's a great place to live and I know, again, we just won more awards and we want to keep Sherwood a great place. Thank you.
Thank you. Council announcements. Dave.
I wanted to ask staff, and you wouldn't have to answer right now, maybe Julie can take this. I think Nancy made a really good point. We all read our taxes and we see a line item that says urban renewal on there, right? And so, I don't want to put you on the spot because, you know, I mean, you can answer anytime or maybe just offline, but does that, urban renewal is very confusing to a lot of people and how the money is, but does that mean that if the urban renewal district hadn't been created, which is created before my time, but if it hadn't been created, does that mean that line item would not be there and that our taxes, our property taxes would be less by that amount on that line item if the urban renewal district had not been created? Is that what that means? Tom.
The answer is no. The reality is, is nobody's taxes changed because of urban renewal and there's just a tax increment freeze that happens when their urban renewal district is formed. They look at the amount of increment of tax that goes over inside of the urban renewal area and then the county and the way that they divide the county up divides that all for everybody's taxes over the city. So nobody's taxes goes up, nobody's taxes in the urban renewal area go up, nobody's taxes within the other areas of the city go up. It remains the same, but that increment gets redistributed to other places and that's why it shows up on the tax.
So you're saying it's just on our, it's line itemed on our tax bill for reasons of their accounting?
That's correct.
But our tax bill would be the same either way?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
I personally would like to thank staff for all the hard work that they are doing and will be doing for us. I support them 100%. I know that everybody that voted for me supports you, so I want you to go home tonight knowing that you're supported, you're loved and keep up the good work.
Ditto.
Quick shout-out to the Sherwood School District for our great partnership that we had on providing an opportunity for 80 children to participate in Beauty and the Beast Junior. We had it over a course of two weekends. We had over 1,600 people attend. It's a record number of attendees. We unfortunately hit our licensing restriction, probably hit the heat restriction the day before because it was pretty hot in the gym, but we hit our licensing restriction and did have to turn people away. But it was a great partnership and I can't thank the Sherwood School District enough. And I have to tell you that the people who were there Saturday night, even if they didn't belong to the families of the kids, they stayed, put away their chairs and we took everything out of the gym in about 90 minutes. It transformed back into a basketball court, which is now being used for basketball this week and that's who Sherwood is. So thank you so much to Heather Cordy, Mary Ann Thunderhide and Jeanette Godfrey at the middle school. They are fabulous to work with and I appreciate them greatly.
I have two short things. One, you probably saw in the paper, I'm working on a, with citizen volunteers on a dog park. I've worked, talked to staff, they're on board with it mostly. We haven't finalized anything, but the response I got is great and it should not cost the citizens really anything. Hopefully, it doesn't cost me anything either. So, and then the second one is, we're starting another partnership with the school district and I'd like the city manager to just briefly talk about that on their planning to show, it's real important how close we work with them and how close we continue to work with them. So now we go into city manager. Oh, never mind.
Sorry, I just had one thing. I wanted to thank everyone who last Saturday attended the Bowman Auction. I know that Councilor Butterfield was there, as was I, and it was a great event and it really helps to sponsor, they had a wonderful video of students that were currently in college that received Bowman scholarships and how thankful they were for the opportunity to receive the scholarship so that they could move on in their education, not just here in Sherwood, but in college and universities. And so that was just a really neat experience and it was a very well-attended event that made lots of money, not just for Sherwood, but Sherwood students going on. So thank you to everyone who attended.
Go ahead now.
Okay, Mayor. You alluded to a process that's just beginning, the school district. As you know, the city's starting to grow again and subdivisions are being built and Heather Cordy, the superintendent and her board really want to get their arms around growth issues and facility planning, both in the short term and the long term. So we had a meeting, Julia Heiduk, our community development director, Tom Pesmire, the assistant city manager, and I met with her senior staff to really start a discussion and try to help them in terms of their planning. Their last facility plan was 2008. That was a very different time and place and I think we're very happy because we have some expertise and some knowledge that we can bring to the table that maybe wasn't done in the past, that will help them plan their facilities again in the short run, but also in the long run. So I think eventually that presentation that the mayor alluded to will be to this council and to the school board. We've talked about, should we do that separately or maybe in a joint work session? So you're both getting the same message in terms of where growth's going to happen and how quickly or not quickly it's going to happen. I mean, I think one of the things that Heather has mentioned is the ridges continue to feel pressure. There's more students at those campuses than they expected and there's subdivisions being built around those schools and then Archer Glen is under capacity. So they have an interesting situation where some of their schools have room and others are being stretched. So they're trying to get their arms around it and trying to work with us as a partner. And I think that's what probably you were alluding to, if not, so.
That's it. Because I remember when I came here 20 years ago, there was issues between the schools and the city and that is all in the past. We just, they're a great partner.
Yep. The only item that I want to mention for the council and the public is Monday is Veterans Day, November 11th. We are holding our second annual event this year. It'll be at 11:00 AM at the high school in the Commons. We're going to go indoors this year rather than outside. We had a great turnout last year, so we expect it to be bigger this year. Mayor Middleton is actually the keynote speaker, so.
I know, that's right.
And then also Representative John Davis will be speaking at the event and some others. So it's only about a 45-minute to an hour. Rose's Restaurant has partnered with us. I don't know if they're here to do some, the food and it's growing from what we did last year. So I want to invite the community out on Monday on Veterans Day. It's an important day in our country, so, and to thank our vets. So, any questions for me?
I want to thank, I don't know if it was you, Kristen, but put that thing out there of the city employees. That is great. I really like that of who's past military. It really, it really is a good deal.
We started that last year and actually, I noticed someone actually taking a picture of it today. I don't know why, she had her camera out and it is technology of those folks, so thank you for noticing.
We're going to adjourn to a URA Board of Directors meeting?